All right, hi, welcome everybody to the Thursday, May 9th Planning Commission meeting in Shelburne. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Andrew, seconded by?
[inaudible]
Second, all right, seconded by Kate. And any discussion around the agenda? All right, all in favor of the agenda stands?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item is the organization, election of chair and vice chair, so the gavel gets turned over to Dean.
I would.
I would.
There's no formal process, so I would entertain any nominations for?
I nominate Jason for chair.
Second.
Okay. Will there be any other nominations for the chairman's position? Hearing no other nominations, would you like to have that considered a motion and a second to elect Jason the chair?
I move we elect Jason as chair of the planning commission. Or reelect.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any naysayers? No? Okay, congratulations, Jason, you get to oversee the election of a vice chair.
All right. Good chat. Do we actually have an extra one? So, all right, in the matter of election of vice chair, do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Andrew as vice chair.
My only hesitation is I accepted a full-time job teaching in the fall.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know if I'm gonna be able to continue on the planning commission through past the summer. I think it's just gonna be too much for me to juggle with kicking that off full-time again and doing this, so you'll have to reelect at some point, or it might be better to go a different direction now. Someone can.
You should probably ride with it, get all we can out of you.
That's the extractive approach.
So, speak of the?
That's hilarious.
Trying to retain some core force.
Yeah. That's fine with me. I'm happy to do it as long as I can.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the teaching gig, that's cool.
Well, yes, there was a nomination and there was a second, and if you want to consider that a motion, then call for a vote.
Consider that a motion, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Good job. All right, so now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from April 25th. Take a motion to approve the minutes.
We approve the minutes.
All right, moved by Stephen, seconded by? We'll still discuss.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Dick, and any discussion?
The discussion I have is on item 7, zoning matters. Actually, I don't even need to even make the change, because Stephen kind of corrected it at the next line, so it's fine.
Yeah, I had notes but no real comments. Any other discussion? All right.
The only thing I didn't understand was, it says it's going from permitted to?
To permitted from conditional, and then Stephen points out that it's going from conditional to permitted, which seems like reiterating the same thing. Was there a contradiction there?
No, I was complaining about the change going from permitted, oh, maybe that is, going from conditional to?
Permitted, right.
From conditional use, so that, yeah, I think it's right.
You don't want it to go from conditional to permitted.
Right, and it says, "and the change to a permitted use from a conditional use," so express concern about the accessory unattached structures and the change to a permitted use from a conditional use.
Right, but then Stephen points out what seems to me, and I'm just, again, I wasn't here, I'm just reading it, so Stephen points out, but it seems to just reiterate the same thing, so I didn't understand what the?
Because one is an accessory dwelling unit in Dick's, what Dick is discussing, and Stephen, I believe, is using the example of an accessory structure, because we're talking about, the issue was whether or not the accessory dwelling unit could be in a separate structure from the house. That was my understanding of what we were discussing.
Yeah, it just read funny to me, because Dick says something, Stephen says the same thing, as if there was some disagreement.
I think there was some conflict between?
Which I know there, yeah.
That I was clarifying, I guess.
It had more to do with the attached versus unattached.
Okay. Got it. All right, that was my only question.
If not, all in favor of approving the minutes as written? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Minutes approved, so next, is any disclosures related to any potential conflicts of interest on tonight's agenda items?
I guess if the PUD and the rural zoning comes up with Jonathan and Amanda, then my ongoing former association is noted.
Yep, you and Stephen both, those have been noted. All right, then, open to the public. Nice.
I thought I heard footsteps.
Yeah, that would've been the cue, right?
They're still looking for parking.
Yeah, the public is still looking for parking.
This is Neil's first meeting without a crowd.
It is.
I thought you were just bringing them in with you, you know, like fans.
That's right, it was a good run.
Yeah.
All right, so then let's move into planning matters. The first item is around the, is around energy, which specifically was the Energy Subcommittee. And I did reach out to the former members, and there is interest from Judy and John and Tim. So, we have three people that are ready to continue the work of the Energy Subcommittee under a new charge, which I suppose we do need to define the charge moving forward, which simplistically, I was just thinking, keep it as simple as possible and say just to, hey Jonathan, to prioritize and propose a path forward for the recommended actions and any associated ideas coming out of the plan. Is that a, I don't know why I keep looking at you, I just?
Well, I was just starting to, you know, get ready to write it down, and then I was thinking, I hope Mary Ann got that. I wasn't sure if she did, but?
Right.
Can you say it again? I mean, I'm not sure why you're looking at me, but maybe if I was writing it down, so I could reread it.
Yeah, I figured that the charge of the Energy Subcommittee as a concept would be to prioritize and propose a path forward for the recommended actions defined in the plan, and we could add in something like in any associated ideas, because new ideas can certainly come up, and we wouldn't want to limit it just to the recommended actions if there are good ideas that come up.
The energy-related.
Energy-related, yeah, this is for the Energy Subcommittee.
Which are found in the Energy section and the Transportation section.
Right, right.
Principally.
Yeah, I'd say energy-related items in the plan. Because the, it's really just the charge that changes, because the activity is essentially can be the same, although I guess we could?
There's language in the, in the town plan about what they would do. Appoint the Town Energy Committee to monitor energy conservation opportunities and activities, educate town residents regarding energy conservation opportunities, and to make recommendations as to renewable energy sources that might be developed in the town.
Right, and that in itself is a recommended action, right?
So you're implementing the plan?
Yeah.
Well, it's appoint the Town Energy Committee to do these things.
Right, but I mean, that is a recommended action?
In the plan.
Yeah.
In the section, that's the plan. So is this page?
Well, this is the existing, the page that is included in the packet was what was created when the Energy Subcommittee was first set up, and it, like it says, it's focused on preparing the document that has been adopted. In that document, there's the language that Neil just read, which really is about a townwide energy committee, which is maybe, with the assumption it is appointed by the Select Board, and this, what we're talking about now, is a continuation of an Energy Subcommittee of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, really, the idea behind the Energy Subcommittee is to, I mean, that, a larger town committee submitted or created by the Select Board could certainly happen. The Subcommittee was more, they worked on items that made their way into the plan, and now it's, okay, so we, as the Planning Commission, it's effectively up to us to be implementing these types of things, and the Energy Subcommittee is a Subcommittee of this commission to do focused work there, and then report back to the Planning Commission and help us with aggregating information and moving forward, because if it's just left to us, I worry that with other things that come up, things aren't going to happen in any kind of timely fashion.
Were you on the Energy Subcommittee, Neil?
Sure was.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Still could be.
Our liaison.
But if we look at this page that's in our packet, that really, in looking at it, I figured the activities, because one of the activities is to review energy sections, well, sorry, analyze and review the energy section of the town plan. Technically, we could change that to say, analyze and review energy-related items in the town plan. That could be a bit more specific. The charge should change something along the lines of the draft that I proposed earlier. Information sharing would be the same, membership could be the same, and I'm open to any suggestions, but previously, we had five. Subcommittee status, the second sentence there, we could get, we could remove, because plans are already in place.
Still intended as a temporary body, or should the whole status removed?
I suppose that's, I'm either way on it, I mean, what's the definition of permanent? I guess we could, is this, are these sections part of a form that's required for these creation, or it's just?
It was just the form that was developed when the Housing Subcommittee was created. I think there were some reasons for it, but it's not dictated.
Okay, because I mean, if we want to be consistent, I'm happy to keep that in there, and if we have a pattern of saying that these subcommittees are temporary bodies, we could just leave that there, unless, we could just remove that section.
Yeah, I think it's maybe kind of a stylistic choice, do you want, if you say it's permanent, you're kind of, I think you're maybe getting closer to the line that says this is really something that the Select Board should be deciding rather than the Planning Commission?
Can you say it's indefinitely temporary?
But it reduced.
Well, I would suggest that we either leave the Subcommittee Status section in there saying that it's intended as a temporary body, or we just take out that whole section, but I would not propose that we say it's permanent or anything like that.
I'd leave the first line.
Just leave the first line?
I'd take the whole?
And if it dissolves itself?
Status thing out.
Right, right, because there could be, I mean, I still think that there's a strong argument, depending on who we get involved and how communication works, that it may make sense at some point just to turn it into an informal group that can just go and do things and then recommend stuff to the Planning Commission, which is effectively what they're doing, but, yeah, there can still be a bit of a struggle, particularly with the smaller subcommittees, in my view, around open meeting laws, because you just don't want to get people worried and tied up with email threads and things when you're only meeting once a month, and the end result is it still is filtering through this commission, so it's not like there's backdoor stuff happening that's not transparent or can't be viewed.
It seems like if we say it's a temporary body, then the second line makes sense, like, because if you say it's temporary, you have to say, well, what would stop it from being in existence? And if we want it to keep on being in existence, seems like we should, like, not just call it a temporary body, just like eliminate the Subcommittee Status thing entirely, both lines of it, and just say it is.
That, yeah, I would lean toward that, unless there was a form reason for just wanting to be consistent with various committees and charges.
Well, there are only two subcommittees, and you've got the housing one coming up, so you could change that to however you?
That's true. Just say, well, it is what it is until we decide it's not.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's just this question that you could ask, if you, if you say it's permanent and it's going to always be there, then it maybe takes the pressure off the Select Board from addressing the recommendation in the plan, which is that they appoint a townwide energy committee. I guess if you feel like the Subcommittee is in fact a substitute for a townwide energy committee, then, yeah, don't point out the temporariness of this, but if you want to keep the pressure on the Select Board to establish a townwide energy committee, then acknowledge this as temporary, or say Subcommittee is intended as a temporary body, the need for which will be determined annually, or something like that, so that you can say, yeah, Select Board, we still want you to create a town, there should be a town energy committee, it should have the resources of a full committee, blah, 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 and by acknowledging that this is temporary, you want them to come through with a committee.
Yeah.
And actually, depends on how you want to look at it. I mean, I do worry that this Subcommittee, being different than what's envisioned in the plan, will take up a lot of energy resources in the town of Shelburne, right, which is to say that the people that are interested and committed, it makes me nervous to have two different committees that are sort of focused on this sort of thing, because I think there'd be?
The Select Board would just adopt this committee. They could just report to the Select Board.
That's an evolution that I could easily see, yeah, it wouldn't, because if the Select Board did create an energy committee, we wouldn't need, I mean, because that energy committee would be pursuing the recommended actions in the plan.
I mean, it's funny, because as I look at, in the grand scheme of things, I'm agnostic on this point, sort of as a temporary or not temporary, I think that when I joined the Energy Subcommittee, part of the reason I joined is because it was temporary, and I was like, oh, all right, it's 12 months, you know, it's whatever, it's this narrow scope of work, I can do that, right? So that was attractive to me. On the other hand, you know, it's not like energy problems are going to go away in a year, which is to say, this is a big picture sort of thing, and so, you know, we maybe should bloody well acknowledge that, right? This is where, you know, really, we have big dreams, hopes and dreams here that we want to see accomplished, so anyways, that's my perspective.
Well, and to that point, it is temporary in that the appointments are for one-year terms, and so people could serve out that term, or, I mean, if they needed to, like, hypothetically, they have some circumstance where they can only go until the fall, and then they have to leave us, then we just shed a tear and have to fill that spot.
They want to be reappointed to the Energy Committee for monthly meetings.
Right, because they only meet once a month.
Twice a month meeting.
That's good, yeah, I like this.
Well, what's the mechanism that we, that would have to happen in order for the Select Board to create an energy committee and, or make this evolve into an energy committee from a Subcommittee?
Reminding them of the contents of the plan? Reminding them of the history, that the idea had been considered before?
Who does that?
Well, the Planning Commission, if you decide that you want to remind them, you could remind them, it could be communicated, or?
We could create an Energy Subcommittee of the Planning Commission to design the energy committee for the Select Board, you know, sort of what those tasks would be, to sort of pitch it to the Select Board and launch it off from there.
Yeah, and that actually gives us an opportunity to have people that are interested in doing something upfront, but then working on a plan for making something bigger that has longer-lasting implications, which could be also attractive to somebody.
Can we do that? You can, well, I think you have some flexibility as far as Subcommittee is concerned. I mean, it's ultimately going to depend on whether or not the Select Board?
Prioritizes it, what have you.
Wait, prioritize it, or what have you?
Right, I mean, there are a lot of committees in Shelburne, there was a time when it seemed like people were saying, you know, we shouldn't be creating more committees, but then that time seemed to have passed, and there was less resistance to the idea of creating more committees. Energy is really, really important, and I think unless there's a group that has some authority to really make strong, meaningful recommendations to the Select Board that's working on it, and that they're recognized by the Select Board, we won't see the progress that we would see if, that we had such a group.
All right, I think you'd see more progress if that group exists than if it stayed as a temporary Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, too, more importantly, right? I mean, we at least are keeping it alive, keeping, moving the ball forward, but not to the way that it should be.
I think you're keeping the idea alive.
Yeah, so I like the idea of saying Subcommittee is intended as temporary body, whatever language we added, to be reappointed annually.
Yeah, the need for which will be determined annually?
Yeah.
I think that was good.
And then leave it at that.
We could change the second line to, to something like, it is expected the Subcommittee will be dissolved upon the adoption by the Select Board of a permanent?
Yeah.
Energy Committee.
Yeah, that is good.
I appreciate that.
With Neil as chairman.
Yeah, so with the change to the charge, and then under activities, the second bullet could say, analyze and review the energy-related topics in the town plan. And then the changes we just discussed under Subcommittee Status, and then this could still retain the framework for that Subcommittee.
Sure.
And then we'll still have two, we'll still have two spots to fill, if anybody knows anybody.
And we're waiting on duly to potentially say?
Right.
Yes again?
Right, just needs Tim to twist his arm or something again.
I can harass him a little.
Yeah, there you go. And as far as structure for this, I know that with the Housing Subcommittee, we are, like, we can just say go, in this case, since we have three people, is just saying this from a procedural standpoint, that I could reach out to them and coordinate just a first meeting kind of thing, just to get together, talk about things, and we may or may not have a couple of extra people in the meantime, but?
Well, if you say it's a five-person, well, it said five, or no, more than seven. Well, if you're saying for this year, you imagine it's five, and you're appointing three, that's a quorum, and they could get, they could have whole meetings.
Yeah, and even if it's not a quorum, it could be an informal, just get together to get ideas going, because I'd prefer to have things moving versus not.
Right.
And we still have a couple of seats to fill. Okay. All right, so for energy, we'll move forward that way and keep an eye out for a couple extra members.
So this, just to kind of circle back to my thought, which just kind of slipped out, but my thought about the Planning Commission's Energy Subcommittee, sort of developing a scope of work for a future Select Board Energy Committee, I mean, is that something that, does that resonate with the other commissioners, and would that be something that we should have as an activity for that group?
It does, but we don't know what, I mean, that is certainly something that the Energy Subcommittee could do, and there is a recommended action in the plan, so that would fall under the energy-related items in the plan, so I would look at it as, have the committee take a look at what those items are and start coming up with a priority list. Similar with economic development, we don't know what the Select Board's going to do, so they may have their own ideas, and I wouldn't want to necessarily get in their way, but absolutely, if they decide, yes, I mean, the Energy Subcommittee could certainly provide input to the, to us, to the Select Board in terms of what that eventual Energy Committee would look like, but I would almost look for the Select Board to welcome that in the event that they, I mean, because it's possible that they might have their own ideas, or their own ways that they want to do it, and I wouldn't want to, I just want to be mindful of time, because there might be some pretty significant low-hanging fruit in the plan that an Energy Subcommittee could just start looking into and start providing feedback Doesn't prevent them from doing that, though, from figuring out what a framework looks like for a larger committee, if that makes sense. I'm just thinking out loud. Does that spark any specific, any other ideas, or I, I'm open. I didn't just steamroll something, did I?
No, I thought it was done.
Oh, okay, all right.
And maybe it will help, I mean, Neil, if they, if the Select Board does create a committee, they traditionally adopted a charge at that time, so I suppose if they're not too busy doing other things, the committee, the Subcommittee could always come up with its ideas for what that charge would be, but it is something that usually the Select Board says what they want this group to do.
Sure, right. But it helps to move things along, just like with the town plan, I think it helped to have the whole thing in a document that was, like, edited and looking like it was all done, so that it helped the Select Board say, you know, good, let's go with it.
It also seems like it's the right group that would be able to best convince the Select Board that a full committee is needed.
Yeah.
Right, because it's the group that's, you know, experts in the field, you know, so, yeah, I like where Neil's going with that idea of them. I mean, I don't know, the only other question is how many have the Neil Curtis view of it, where there's this beautiful little temporary thing, and they don't want a permanent possession doing it, you know, and they're, but I mean, they could still create the scope of work and pass it off to other people who do want it, I mean, imagine some of them.
The sooner they created that scope of work, the earlier they?
They could get out.
Yeah.
Well, and that, I think that would give people confidence about what they were signing up for, I think it would actually help recruit people, because there are a lot of people in this town who care very much about it, and it's an issue that is, the profile is only, you know, increasing. I was just at a, finally, transportation is being, you know, connected with energy use in the state, and I was just, last Friday, at a whole symposium on micro-mobility, you know, so that's going to start to, you know, we'll start to see it integrated with other topical areas, so I think it's going to be increasingly important.
Yeah, I'm not against adding another bullet, if we want to?
Right.
Yeah, do you want to just state that out loud?
I mean, I just wrote down, like, scope of work for the full energy committee, or define its charge, just questions to myself, but, you know, so that activity might be, advocate for the creation of a permanent energy committee under the Select Board, and define that committee's charge, something to that effect.
Are we, as the Planning Commission, suggesting that that is the way we want things to go?
I think so.
Yeah?
Versus keeping them as a temporary, permanent Subcommittee?
Yeah, similar to Neil, I don't, I mean, I am truly agnostic on this, it's just more?
What do you mean by way to go? Like, that there is a permanent committee under the Planning Commission?
Maybe if they just ask the Select Board annually, are there goals that you would like us to address, and the Select Board will eventually get the picture?
Yeah, I mean, well, basically, lots of things can happen, and the more, the more things that we specifically put into words, that kind of, that can have the good effect of guiding in the direction that we definitely want things to go in, but it can have a hindering effect where a committee could look at this and say, okay, these are the things that we need to do, and?
Takes away their creativity.
Yeah.
So the amendment that, the edit that you had proposed on that second bullet, analyze and review the energy section of the plan, would, just remind you?
I would have just, I mean, we could reword all of this, but I was just suggesting to analyze and review energy-related topics in the town plan.
And so, just by saying, and make recommendations to implement?
Yeah, I mean, the plan has a lot of recommended actions.
Then that circles back to saying, okay, there's all these different recommendations that are in the plan in the Energy Section, one of them is appoint a Subcommittee.
Right.
So if we said, make recommendations to implement the things that are in the town plan, then that gets us there?
Yes.
Very broadly, right?
That's how I was looking at it, and then if the Subcommittee is just really, like, let's say there's zero creative juices, and there's no real strong feelings one way or the other, and they need input, then they could ask us for that, and we could just say, okay, well, here, we'll prioritize your top five if you want. But I would, I feel like it would be good to have an independent review, well, independent, but a review from a group dedicated to just doing that, to look at, okay, there's a lot of recommended actions in there, what might be a way to prioritize those in terms of easiest to implement, or most timely, or these are burning platform-type issues, because we're not? Because we're not going to sit down and just do that.
Sure.
In these meetings. I guess that's where I was coming from, but I, we can be as specific as we want, technically.
I think, well, I think the, the idea that the goal is to, to have this as a, a committee of the Select Board, and not to remain as a Subcommittee of the Planning Commission, should, should be stated, because nobody's going to infer that, just like, from osmosis. I think something, everybody, we all look for, like, here's the thing that we have to do, and then we do the thing that we have to do, or not, but I, I think we should say that specifically.
Right, that, what you're talking about was one of the recommended actions in the plan, to create a committee at the Select Board level. I, a lot of things could happen, the Select Board has a lot on their plate, they might not be interested in doing that, so if we say, "Yeah, we want you to do this," and then the Select Board says, "We don't want to do that," like, then, I, I'm just trying to keep it clean from, in my mind, and efficiency perspective, but I, again, I, I really am not partial to it, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't paint ourselves in a corner somehow, or create a situation with the Select Board where we're, we're saying, "Hey, this is something that we're pushing to create," and the Select Board says, "That's just more work that you're giving us, why?" Even though that is a recommended action, and I think we would all like to see that, to have a bigger, higher-profile type energy group like some other towns have done.
Yeah, well, I mean, we wrote it up in the plan, they approved it, so if, you know, basically, they're saying that they want to do that, maybe it's not their top priority, but if there's somebody advocating for that, not necessarily, not the Planning Commission, but the actual Energy Subcommittee, I would think that, that would put it more to the top of the Select Board's plate.
Sure, yeah, and I guess I don't want to split hairs, but what we're doing is we're prioritizing the recommended actions right now, which is fine, but we're saying that that is a priority of ours, and if we're all cool with that, great, like, yeah, let's put it in there as a specific thing that we want them to do. But part of what I was looking at for the Subcommittee was, "Okay, the plan's in place now, there's a lot of energy-related items, can, can you all just take a look at it, break it down, and come up with a way to approach this?" And one of those things is a townwide Energy Committee that would be done at the Select Board level. So how, how that moves forward, to me, is irrelevant, and I think it's a great idea. If we just want to say, "Yeah, let's do that," then we add that bullet, and we're good.
I say we add the bullet.
Okay.
What's everybody else think?
I agree.
Great.
And when you say "that bullet," it's the bullet that it would be to advocate, to advocate for the creation of the permanent committee?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great.
And to set up a framework for what that committee's charge is.
Okay. So anything else that, that anybody wants to have pulled out of here or changed, outside of what we've already discussed?
That last little bit about, and recommend what the charge is, I just want to make sure that's, that is the consensus, that would be how this is rewritten?
I mean, they can propose a framework for what the charge might look like, or, or a draft charge. I mean, at the end of the day, it would be the Select Board that would be defining it, it's, it's more giving them ideas for what they might want to shape, that's how I view it.
I agree, yeah, which I think that captures.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the Select Board, like you're saying, is busy, and the more somebody else is doing to say, "Does this look good?", the closer it'll be to them saying, "Yeah, it looks good."
Yeah.
I was just reading ahead, and there is no status on the Housing Subcommittee, in terms of that being permanent, temporary, or whatever, so...
Yeah, we're not done with this one yet.
No, I'm just pointing out, like, I was just curious how it was worded, so, I mean, if we're, one of the things we got hung up on is this whole Subcommittee status.
That's true, if we added the bullet about discuss and advocate for the creation of it, we don't need that Subcommittee status at all.
Yeah.
It's just what it is until it's not.
Right.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, okay.
Just cut it out.
So we'll remove the Subcommittee status section. Good on the Energy side?
Yeah.
All right. Housing Subcommittee.
And the, the three people, it's reg, the minutes can show that those three people have been appointed to the committee?
Correct.
Okay, and I don't know if you've said their names out enough so that Mary Ann could have them for the minutes, or?
No, I said first names.
I did.
Judy?
Judy Raven.
Uh-huh.
John Pascarella.
Okay, and Raven is I-M-E-N?
R-A-V-E-N.
Yeah, okay.
And then Tim is Guttermann? Guttermann, that's not how I pronounce it, but G-U-I-T-E-R-M-A-N. And we're awaiting word from Matt Dooley. D-O-L-E-Y.
Letting it show.
Yes.
Right, right.
And Neil Curtis upgraded himself.
How formal he is on...
Okay, and then on the, the Housing Subcommittee, one argument could be that it, the, the charge effectively remains what it's been unless there's a, unless there are ideas to add.
They had proposed the revision that's on the next page end, so if you're looking at the full version, current charge is shown there, and then they revised it slightly.
Oh, I'm sorry, I read that backwards, yeah, got it. Yeah, that...
There's this reference to the, update the housing element of the comprehensive plan, and that's looking ahead eight years? If the housing section is going to be put off until, and then, I think one of the ideas that the Commission will need to figure out is, is that, what will the process of updating the plan be in a world where it's every eight years?
Right.
So maybe housing is done in three or four.
Right.
And it's updated, you know, when the census numbers come out, or something like that.
Right, well, I like the idea, too, having gone through, we've gone through the idea of taking sections of the plan, starting in a year or two, you know, taking some portions of it, and kind of working on them each year, so that that last year isn't everything in a year. Just mostly polish. That was brutal. I'm good with, I mean, you know, I'm good with their change.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, so updating that charge and then other tasks is technically outdated. I don't know if that's necessarily needed.
Change the dates there?
Well, it's just saying that the charge expanded.
Okay.
But we have the charge now.
Right, okay.
And, I mean, if we wanted to, that first sentence about monitoring new building permits and pending development to keep information current could just be added as a, well, I guess it couldn't. Or we could just...
I mean, I think their objective in the rewrite was to make it broader so that it would include things like that, so if what you're angling for maybe is to just get rid of other tasks, I don't know that they would have a huge problem with that, since they've had, they've already talked about Hamlets, unless you want them to go back to it.
I, seems like it's been resolved.
Yeah, or at least is something that's been discussed and can come up as needed, however the...
Development rights don't seem to be going too far anywhere.
That hasn't been dealt with?
No, I mean, not just Schaumburg, but other areas seem to have a lot of problems with development rights, I don't know that there's a...
TDR, it was, yeah, they can, they can fix the problem that, the case that went against them.
Which one?
You're talking about South Burlington and the case that, yeah, there were some technical things, I think they can fix them pretty decent.
They're pretty much the biggest user of, of that, aren't they? I don't know that...
How does that work, transfer of development rights?
It doesn't.
How's it supposed to, what's the idea of that?
Theoretically, you would, if you live in a rural district, you want to transfer so many development rights to an area that's targeted for development, you could add those, you could, instead of a 20-unit building, you'd have a 30-unit building or something. But typically, people that are getting the development rights don't want to pay what the development rights would be worth in a rural area.
Oh, okay.
So it's not really functional.
See, I, I mean, I, I think with that, with that charge, that gives them breadth to be able to do things, and then, the way things normally work is if there are questions from a Subcommittee, then they can route them through the Planning Commission to get additional guidance if needed.
Makes sense.
So the only other, the other item on the Housing Subcommittee, though, is that there was one, one member that won't be returning, so there's going to be an open spot there. Otherwise, the, the other members, Neil? Yeah, that was Brian.
Oh, Brian's leaving?
Yeah.
That's too bad.
There wasn't, there was a suggestion just to appoint him anyway, but I'm, I won't do that. So is this, would this be enough to have the wording that we need to have both of those committees going, or is there a procedural thing?
So if you want, if, if the group, or if your direction is that the minutes will show that the revised charge is as was in the packet, and I guess I'm still wondering, what, was there a resolution to other tasks, or is that going to be left alone?
I think just get rid of the second and third sentence.
Can you get rid of the whole section, because it's already captured?
That's what I wasn't sure.
The new building permits thing?
Yeah, is that captured in their charge?
Not specifically, but yeah, I, I don't know...
I mean, it's sort of incorporated in collect, collate, analyze data on housing stuff.
It is, it's similar to Energy, it's just how specific do we want to be? I mean, keeping information current is certainly a beneficial thing to do, to me, that's kind of implied.
Yeah, I'd say then just take that first sentence, can't you just bump it up as a data point that they...
I agree.
And then cut everything after it? So once we're in, how does the Catalogue, Subcommittee will monitor new building permits and pending development to keep the information current becomes, okay, you know, something up here.
Sounds good.
Yep, so the first sentence becomes a bullet under the data section.
And the rest of it.
And the rest is cut, yep. Okay, so I guess that settles for the Housing Subcommittee, and again, just noting that there is an open spot.
And thank you to all those who volunteered for Energy and Housing.
Thank you for pointing that out, yes.
Because I did mention transfer development rights, something along the line of what Kate is doing in the North End might work within a district for transferring development rights, or their equal value.
So is it good?
In a form-based zoning district, it might make sense to transfer development rights from one lot that we want to use for water and stuff to another one, so it might be effective, it probably could be effective in that, within the same district.
It's not a bad idea.
I think it's a great idea, Dick, and that would really serve a lot of our interests, and it's within one district, so it's very clean that way, I think administratively. Yeah, yeah, gold star, well done.
Nice.
So is that an argument?
Dick and Kate working together.
I was trying to think of something smart, but...
Never happened before.
So how is that organized, the transfer of development rights? It's a part of the things we, the thing we just eliminated?
But they can still, I think it's open-ended enough where they can do all of that.
Yeah.
I don't think they need a specific.
Okay, but you're just making sure that we all know, and the minutes will mention that you had said, "Hey, one of the things that they can work on is TDR, or possibly in the form-based zoning district, or in their seven corridor."
Do we want to add TDR as one of the bullet points?
That's, that's data that's being collected, though, right?
Yeah, that's data, I think they, they saw that list as being more, I mean, until we had a program...
They're saying they're going to develop recommendations that help Schaumburg achieve local and statutory housing goals, and that's basically what we're trying to do up there, and commercially as well. I mean, you're not, probably won't transfer commercial development rights, although I guess it could be.
I don't think it has to be put in this document or the charge, it could just be an email we send to them saying, "Hey, one of the things, suggest we might have to look at is this," and that's, you know, they can do it or not.
Does that make sense? Would, would that actually come up, or?
I don't know that it would be the first thing that they would work on, but if, if it was something that the Planning Commission felt like, "Hey, you know, we're going to spend some time, resources, brain power on TDR, hey, Housing Subcommittee, do you want to work on that?" I think they would be open to it. I, I'm not sure that it would be their single focus, because, well, yeah, I mean, I think they could get into it, so...
Yeah.
Well, if you give them 10 bullet points, unless, if we, they're probably not going to get to it, or think about it, unless it's nice as a bullet point.
Well, those 10 bullet points are, they're data points to collect. Those aren't tasks for them to do, they're data points for them to collect. So if we wanted to add something like...
Other tasks.
TDR, we'd have to have other tasks, and then we're getting into just noting specific things for them to do, and their charge gives the latitude to do that. Again, we can specifically put other tasks or suggestions, or have a section that notes that. I think as we get into form-based zoning, and after hearing that idea, I think that's something that we're going to, I mean, if, if we get to it, that's something we may even get to touch on tonight, but I think that that becomes part of the form-based zoning discussion, and then that could be an area where the, the Housing Subcommittee might be able to look into things for us to support that.
So, so we're taking it out of their can, basically, because right now, it's listed as one of the other tasks.
It would be the only other task if we kept the other tasks section?
It's a take away an S.
I mean, honest, based, huh? Based on what we just removed, other tasks would now say, "Transfer of development rights." Like, that would be the only topic that we would have in other tasks.
Yeah. Is it bad form to just have one?
No, if you feel strongly about it, let's do it. I, I'm...
I don't know, I mean, this is the first time I'm, like, really becoming aware of it, but it seems like it might be helpful to look into it.
Well, we probably will, we're doing form-based zoning, and it's kind of along the line of what Kate was talking about doing, I mean, the renewed plan is to make changes and create areas where we'll have some water parks, and obviously, we'll take some development land to do that, so it only makes sense that this will naturally occur.
Okay, so they don't, they aren't necessarily the ones to be looking into.
Well, we might be able to get some help from them.
Something that we're looking...
They have some of the expertise maybe on how to do these transfers of rights and things that could be beneficial.
Okay, so maybe we should list it as an other task.
I think they'll get it, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with them, like, this is kind of similar to where I was saying the Select Board may have thoughts around whatever their Energy Committee is that they're going to do, like, we're, we're going to have discussion around form-based zoning, this is going to be one of the topics we get into, and hypothetically speaking, there could be a reason why we can't do it at all, so to put it in a charge to a Housing Subcommittee when we haven't really discussed it or figured out where we may or may not want to go with it, that could just, could be muddying the waters. A thought, not, not, again, I'm impartial, mostly just want to move on to the next topic.
Yeah, I think by not calling it out, it's not that it's going to be forgotten.
Right.
I don't think we need to call it out.
Other do you consider this one?
Yeah.
And if you want, if you want to talk more about TDRs, I'll, I'll talk about TDRs for a couple of hours with you.
Okay. I, I really like that idea, and I would like to, I think that's something that we'll definitely be discussing, that won't get forgotten.
Well, and that's something we can do without having a, a stormwater utility in place, which we'd have no, you know, kind of idea where that's going to go.
Right.
With the Select Board, so, yeah, I think, I think it's a really neat idea and a really clean... clean mechanism that we could, you know, move forward sooner rather than later.
The critical parts of a TDR system will be to identify areas that development density will come from, and areas that it will go to. And there's a lot of politicking that will go into that effort, as South Berlin has found, because it's easier to find sending areas than receiving areas. But the form-based zoning has already upzoned things, upzoned substantially. One of the things that's going to make TDR really difficult is to, to do it in a meaningful way. There's already so much density that you can do under TD, under form-based zoning. People may not have any incentive to go look for development rights. That's part of the system, is that you balance so that people have an incentive to go buy rights.
Okay.
If they don't need them, if you can't pack them onto the property as it is, people aren't going to buy them. There won't be a market.
Well, but the form-based zoning is not the de facto zoning either, it's a parallel code, and so there's some creative play space in there.
So, yes, certainly could talk about using TDRs in a default zoning system.
Sure.
But then you'd still have the problem with what the sending areas and receiving areas will be.
Think there's a lot of directions that conversation could go.
Find a lot of partnerships will end up.
Yeah. All right, so the Housing Subcommittee certainly has some work ahead of them, and we do as well, on the form-based zoning, to help guide those discussions.
Can I just, not to beat a dead horse, as far as taking any of the, the language that was in other tasks and moving it up to the list of data, there are already two bullet points that basically cover the things that were down there, the pending building permits and current proposals for new houses, is essentially the way that they track the number of new buildings and what the likely buildings will be. So they've already got that in that list. I don't think you need to be proposing to them that there's new, new items on the list.
Okay, so basically, we're just getting rid of the other tasks?
I think so.
Section. Okay. Good observation. Okay, so good for zoning matters? First item is getting into some of the definitions.
Some of the different definitions, or the ones beyond that you spent a lot of time on at your last meeting, which was really, you got progress on the definition of open space.
Right.
The idea was to move to some of the other topics.
We didn't specifically get into core forest or steep slope.
Correct.
Is there any preference for which one we start with? Core forest is first.
Take them in order.
Yeah.
Would it help people to, to have a reminder of how it's used, because I think that this packet didn't include the current language. Do you, do you remember, or should you, do you want to see where those phrases are used?
That would help.
Yeah, so I'll pull that up on the screen.
And core forest, this is a refresher to me, we did not have that defined in.
It's not the prime present, and this is one of the phrases that, at the public hearing, when the changes were adopted, the Chair of the Select Board identified it as one, one example of a phrase that could be used. And I think, I think Dave Marshall's Communications also said, you should probably define it.
And we do have it defined in the open space plan, which is what our fallback would be, if that definition were to be challenged.
It's one of the options, although.
Right.
I don't know.
Was it the first one, Shelburne Conservation Plan?
Yeah.
Two seventeen.
Yeah. I don't know, do you want to talk at all about what Sean was saying about core forests versus forest blocks, or do you want to?
Yeah, he's a little reluctant to.
Do you mind with the mic? Sorry.
Don Rendell, Natural Resources Committee. So Sean, we were talking last night on, on the issue, he was making the point about definitions and core forest, he's a little hesitant to use that terminology, prefers more forest blocks as being more appropriate. And I forget exactly how he justified, he was saying that the science, I think, is kind of nebulous on really what core really means, but we would recognize that we have very little blocks of forest in Shelburne anyway, so we would like to have some kind of language that does protect them, and they're usually, or frequently in kind of connector zones for wildlife and so forth. And also, the issue of protecting even to the edge of forest and development, so that a house doesn't intrude into forest and lose a lot more forest in that fashion.
Does a block have any sort of size parameters in Sean's thinking? I just note that, because in Shelburne's Conservation Plan twenty seventeen, it's, we talk about forested habitat that's part of a block of at least seventy-five acres in size.
Right, and that's where it gets more troublesome for us.
I think I have heard seventy, a minimum of seventy-five feet in width used for terminology for connecting corridors for, for wildlife habitat in other contexts, you know, other rural towns. So that seems a bit more related to serving our needs here, given that we don't have these, you know, our charge is not really to protect these massive blocks of forest, because we don't have them.
Right.
But to be as wise as possible about conserving and working around the existing, and particularly the contiguous fragments, because that, I mean, you and I know from, we, we live behind each other, and we have, we have quite a little habitat going in the woods that separates our houses, which is probably about seventy-five feet, actually. So there's, you know, they're effective, there's a lot going on. So maybe, maybe that would be more in the spirit of what Sean was thinking about.
It is some thinking that we would like to see some protective.
I can try and look where I remember seeing that as a reference.
And I'm remembering, having gone through a couple of the, the state biomapping things, there's not many spots that there, those maps will, will identify, but as really high priority, because of not having that mass that you're talking about, but there are some that are on, on those maps.
Well, when we had, when Jens Hilke spoke to us a couple of years ago, he said, you know, we don't have any other really big animals anymore here, but we do have apparently a very robust habitat for bobcats, and they're sustained by our riparian corridors, and, and we realize that they're right smack in the area where, you know, we want to, we said is our growth area. So, you know, like, what do you do? So I, you know, I think maybe that, finding some sort of a, an approach to protecting the areas that is tailored to our conditions, and, you know, the reality that that's where, that we're going to have some incompatibilities, where some of the growth is projected to happen in places where maybe, you know, it, it wouldn't be ideal for it to happen, so how do we modify that to, you know, kind of, you know, create a win-win?
Yep, it's going to be a balancing act.
Yeah.
As you know. Yeah.
What are you calling up here?
I was just going to try to give you an idea of where the core forests are in Shelburne, according to the Natural, Agency of Natural Resources. So I was hoping that it was, it couldn't be easier to find than it's turning out to be. So this is, he had used the, the forest blocks, there are, part of the problem is, is that there are a number of similar related terms. And this, I have to apologize, this was a conversation that the committee had only last night, because that was what they meant.
Yeah, so we haven't really been able to research definitions as may exist out and about too much more.
When you had that forest
Yeah.
On there, that seemed to show.
That was a.
I mean, you've got, you can see that in Shelburne, there's lots of small blocks, you know?
Right.
Everything's less than five hundred acres.
Right, so, yeah.
And you can see the riparian corridors that Kate was talking about.
But this, I can't control the, the cutoffs. So if I can divert attention from this for just a second, the, something to understand as far as the definition is, is that it's in a, it's in a section that has a should. So this is a standard that says that BUDRs in the rural district will have building envelopes and no cut zones, those shall be required by the DRB. Building envelopes should avoid fields and core forests, so the definition of core forests, if you keep the phrase core forest, and if you do something like model it after what is included in the open space plan, is a, it's a should. So it's not a mandate. It's a, you know, it would be nice if you could avoid, just want people to understand the context for it. Later, it says shall, those, so when the building envelopes are being reviewed by the DRB, they shall not include sensitive areas such as wetlands, floodplains, or steep slopes. And so this is the next part of your discussion would be, okay, if this basic structure remains the same, should avoid core forests, shall avoid sensitive areas such as steep slopes. Well, how steep is steep?
Yeah, maybe it's foreshadowing. I still have a hangup on steep slopes as a general concept.
We need two, two definitions of steep slopes.
We do, yeah, because.
Because we don't control development at all at this point. The only thing we could use is as a zoning measure. So if we wanted to find steep slopes, is what can you build on, then we should create that term.
Right, which gets really messy really fast.
What would your lot be? Wouldn't that be steep slope where you live?
Um, yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
So, how do you pronounce it, riparian? Riparian, how, how is that defined? I mean, which, just following up into your comment about how that's, that's important in terms of wildlife connectivity or what have you, how, how is that defined? Does that have anything to do with this, like, one hundred meters from buildings and structures and roads?
No, it's, it really has more to do with the water. It's, 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 so it's like a buffer around whatever, a stream or a river.
Yeah, it's usually just the stream plus the buffer.
It's pretty much all that we have left in terms of really robust.
Yeah.
Both from a water quality standpoint, right, obviously key to keep that riparian buffer up, so stuff doesn't wash into the river, but, you know, it's like, the river banks become the highways that the animals travel along, and if there's a buffer, a riparian buffer, that's, so it's not, you don't mow right down to the river.
Right.
They're using that cover as a travel.
So that, I mean, that just, it just seemed like a way to sort of set up a priority system for our town, given our present day and anticipated future, expected conditions. The other thing is, I, I just wanted to remind the committee that Jens Hilke offered to, you know, help us make some of these decisions, like what, from a, given our criteria for protecting resources, for preserving habitat, et cetera, what would, what would the best approach be for, for Shelburne?
So I have finally found the map, or a map, that shows core forests as they are used in the open space plan. So this, this green is shown on this map, so the places where they exist, you know, along Shelburne Pond, south of Pond Road, east of the pond, and these other areas.
Webster Woods.
And you can also see that the edge forest, this is something that Sean was talking about last night, I, I think he's, he wants people to understand, it's, there are forests that would be, in a sense, seen as expendable or less important if you just are staying away from core forests. And I think some of what he's saying is, is that edge forests aren't necessarily less important, they're different. But right now, the idea, what the language is in the regs is core forest, and so those would be the darker green. So if someone was proposing a development, just looking at this area, and the lots were encroaching on the light green, that would be fine, as far as that standard is concerned, but the dark green would be discouraged. So in a sense, you could count up the number of areas, and there aren't a lot of them that aren't already somehow protected.
And those are core forests, using what definition would be? I mean, are the definitions of area in the regs?
Yeah, the definition is.
Seventy-five acres or something?
Yeah, forested habitat that is part of a block at least seventy-five acres in size, and at least a hundred meters from developed features such as buildings and roads.
Did that, well, in two comments, one, the, I think part of the issue is that the definition is not in the regs, this is in the open space plan?
Right.
Oh, okay.
And so we, we might need to adopt, either adopt this definition for ours, or doctorate. Did, did the, did the size of seventy-five acres in size and a hundred meters from developed features, did that come from a particular, like, process or reference, or was it just more?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
So the hundred meters is found more, in more places than the seventy-five acre threshold is. I mean, these, these other two examples are from documents that come from the Agency of Natural Resources here in Vermont.
So it's not defining the size, it's just defining the distance from development.
Well, at least in these examples that are not from the Shelburne Open Space Plan.
Is there a reason that we wouldn't adopt the open plan definition? The only reason I could say is the seventy-five acres is pretty huge, you know, applied to Kate's backyard, that, it's a big area, and there are so few of those out there. So some, I mean, it looks like other, these other quotes that you put in here, Dean, don't allude to any kind of acreage, but just
Right.
Talk about the distance from an edge, or a field, or a building, or a road.
Right.
That's where things get complicated, and I think even with Jens, the idea of an overlay, he was suggesting that that's not, or hasn't, he hasn't seen that be successful. I think he had some hesitations around it. But for me, I think the intent here is just to ensure that where there is contiguous, I call it forest or riparian corridor, whatever it is, I mean, continuous, contiguous type things, we don't want development to break that up, and make it so that that animal highway gets disrupted in a major way.
Well, as I remember, I think I'm remembering maybe some of the same thing you are, the, that was the surprise of what his presentation, was that the robust ripari, the robust animal habitat corridors were not where we expected them to be. They were in, they were in our midst, they were in, they were underneath Shelburne Road, you know, in subdivisions, where there are little tributaries of brooks and things. I mean, it helped me to see the town through sort of new eyes, you know, because it was, it was very unexpected. So I don't know how you reconcile that functional part with then, just, you know, there's, then there are scenic issues, too, you know, I mean. I mean, I don't really want to be looking at a whole bunch of houses in a field if they can be kind of tucked away in a forest someplace. You know, that has a benefit of preserving more of the pastoral aspect of, of the land, um, in the countryside. But, um, I mean, how do we decide, how do we determine our, is, is the cost of doing that wrecking some important resource? You know, I mean-
That, that's where this gets really difficult.
Yeah.
Because even if you say, I, I understand the intent behind this and the, the should versus shall. Like, I, I'm actually in agreement that, I think that that should stay a should, as long as these are things that would be going in front of some reviewing body like the DRB that could then further decide through witnesses or other information, in this specific case, is this okay to encroach here and there are other ways around it? Whereas in this other case, there might not be alternatives for wildlife travel.
We would prefer to advocate for some element of shall, uh, as well. So, uh, without it, uh, you know, there's the fear that, you know, everything over time just gets mowed down and we get, you know, just sprawl and, and, and concrete and so forth. And we lose the, the sense of place, this Shelburne, when we look through the pictures in the open space plan, lots of trees, it's, it, it has that green look to it and, and, you know, it's not the suburban, you know?
I don't remember which town it is, but there were one or two that specify that it would only be built in the last, if there was no other place to build.
And that, that's, and I'm glad you said that, Don, but that, that was kind of where I was going as well, is that I, I do agree with that should there, but I think there needs to be a clause on there that says, in no instance will, like, a block get broken in two. So to Kate, to your point, and I, we would need to understand the numbers to back this up, but, like, that there would always need to be a minimum of a seventy-five foot corridor between blocks or something. So that if somebody did have a, a plot of land and the place where it made sense to develop did encroach in there, and that would, that would leverage the should part of that, that, okay, well, there isn't anywhere else to do this development that we otherwise are in agreement is okay to happen. Then there should be some absolute limit of, you're not, like, that development is not going to break apart some aspect of core forest. There's going to be some minimal, um, stretch that keeps it contiguous. I don't know what that number would be. That was just where my head was going to kind of add a shall to a should. But I think that there's going to be a reaction if, um, if just looking at that map and saying, all of the dark green areas, zero development whatsoever, I could see that there might be a property owner where 90% of their property is in that block. And then if they feel constrained, we're going to have the reactions that we just had with the rural PEDs.
This is actually, it, it feels like it's two different things that we're talking about. On the one hand, it's the core forest, and you're looking at the map where those green, dark green areas, there aren't very many of them. And that feels like something that we should definitely protect. But then there's this other piece about wildlife corridors and such, which is really, it, it just feels like a very different definition. I'm, I'm challenged to put it into the same, into the same definition.
Because they are, in some ways, not necessarily correlated.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they overlap quite a bit, but you're right, they're two different circles with a lot of overlap.
It's a tough one. If there's a hill of seventy-five acres of core forest, and somebody wants to, like, not put their house down in a gully at the edge of the thing, but wants to put it at the top of the hill to have the views, I would think that, you know, they should be allowed to do that. You know, even if it's putting it into the, into the core forest. I'm hesitant to, to say you can't and, and you need to make it a, a shall-avoid core forest. But at the same time, I mean, there's, there's got to be some mechanism to, to, just like you're saying, Don, to, to do the shall. But allow for, for some flexibility somehow.
And, and that's kind, that's where, exactly where my head went, was, on the surface, there needs to be a, we should not be building into these core forest areas, because to your point, Neil, we, we, we should want to protect that deep green. Like, we're, we're not generating any more of it, basically. But at the same time, especially when it comes to wildlife corridors and the ability to retain continuity, there should be, I mean, there needs to be a shall in terms of what is the minimum that needs to be kept in place. And that would provide guidance to a DRB that I could see a DRB saying, hey, you've got shoulds everywhere, and how are we supposed to make these decisions?
And the shoulds are difficult on a DRB, they're very difficult, because they're basically not a rule. They're just, you weaken the rule to the point where the rule no longer is effect, it's the waiver that, it becomes, I have to have the waiver.
That's the challenge with all of this, because legally, if you can find a technicality, you can work around all kinds of stuff. And it's, it's all about the, the spirit of the intent that it would be great if we could all agree on.
Can I throw out, and this might be a crazy idea, but I was just thinking about your, uh, your conversation from the last topic about transfer of development rights. Because what if there was some program where people could plant new trees? So, if they wanted to, like, put their house up on the mountaintop, like Stephen said, they can do that if they plant 100 trees in another place. And, uh, I don't know, just throwing, throwing that out, it could be, there's no mechanism for that, or it's weird. But, um, I just wonder if there's some notion of, like, again, from my point from the last meeting, like, being generative as well? Um, and if there's a way to do that within these bylaws?
I think that's a super idea.
Yeah, I agree, like, if you are going to build in a core forest, which the should would enable you to do, but then, how, I mean, you're-
But then that you shall replace the core forest in another spot.
Right, whatever that footprint is, yeah, which-
Over the next eighty years.
Yeah, it's always site-specific.
I mean, I like the idea, but-
Yeah, I do too.
Core forest took a long time to get there, and then you're taking it apart and you're claiming to grow some trees, I mean, it just-
I mean, it's better to do something than nothing, for sure.
Agreed.
I just think, like, we remember that movie we saw at BCA last winter of the, um, Sebastio Salgado. I don't know if you guys have seen this movie called Salt of the Earth, I think. He was an amazing photographer, like, photographed all this genocides and really horrendous stuff. And then he was so heartbroken by what humanity had done that he turned back to his family's land in Brazil, which had been turned into desert from lumbering. And he planted, like, a million trees or something insane, and it's brought back the jungle. Like, it's crazy to see it, it's so moving. So it was just like, wow, he can really bring back forest, and they have a different climate there, of course. But it's cool, like, imagine if Shelburne became a place where people were reforest. I mean, Vermont used to be covered in forest, like, is there some way of bringing some of it back?
And then it wasn't, and then a lot of it came back. I think we were, 80% of our trees were gone at some point within the last 150 years, and then a lot of it came back. I think the, the challenge and something that we've seen, uh, on this commission, at least in my time on it, is that it gets really hard when you start trying to create regulations around these things. Because generally, there isn't a one-size-fits-all, there needs to be some kind of latitude. Because to create that one-size-fits-all, there's always going to be edge cases where those people are just, they don't have any options. And it would make sense otherwise. And that's why, that's why eventually we'll, we'll have a topic around waivers so we could maybe develop ways that those types of edge cases can be dealt with. But in the meantime, we have to have, we have to, we, we just have to be able to create some kind of framework that makes, makes sense for the, for the whole, with knowing that we're not going to keep all the people happy.
But that kind of thing would be able to keep people happy. You know, each, the person would be able to put his house or her house where they want to, in a forest, in the, in the best part, to put the house, and then plant the trees elsewhere on the property.
Sometimes you can't replace-
Assuming they have the space of it, right.
Forest, maybe you can't replace the, the animal life that's there, or the, there's all kinds of. Sometimes it's best not to mess with nature, to find a location.
So do you advocate for a shall? Shall not be built on core forest land?
Uh, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I'm, I'm not saying that in particular, I'm just saying that, just allowing it to be open-ended. I don't know that that's the way to go. There, it needs to be conditional.
I'm going to, I'm going to try to channel Susan Meckenberg, because I think Susan, and maybe you can back me up on this, but Susan is an ecologist, she's a member of the Natural Resources Committee. I think she's, she's, um, had a big impact on this being in the text, at least as it came as a recommendation from the SNRCC. Because she used to, um, have problems with the bylaw when it said, building envelopes should avoid open fields. Because to her, these unbroken forest blocks are very important. And the bias of the regs was to keep the fields open, prioritize the pastoral views, and de-emphasize the, the more remote wildlife areas that need to be unbroken to be what they are. So I think she was glad to see this, and yes, it should, but it puts the open field and the core forest area on a more equal footing than it was before. Now, whether or not it needs to be three, three things, open fields, core forests, and corridors, that's a separate discussion. But I just wanted people to know that there were people like Susan on the Natural Resources Committee whose training told her that bylaws were really basically prioritizing open fields over the core areas. The other thing I just wanted to touch on is that, as I understand, the charge that the, the select board was giving to the planning commission when it went ahead and adopted the changes was to add definitions. Some of the things I'm hearing and people are recognizing that, well, you know, to do this right, you're going to think about more than just definitions, and that's okay. But it's a bigger task, and I'm just wondering whether or not, if it's more than definition, do you need to step back and think more globally about just, you know? Maybe you do need to get Jens in again, you want to invite him. Maybe you do need to figure out a way to incorporate the corridors and put it as a third leg, or maybe you need to do something else. Because I tried to keep this just really limited to definitions, and you could possibly come to agreement on definitions and satisfy the select board.
I'm definitely feeling that challenge, as I mentioned a few minutes ago. I mean, my knee-jerk reaction is to be like, oh, boy, it's, it's in the conservation plan, we, that, it's there for a reason. We ought to, we ought to take that up. But then there's these other issues that if, if we want to go down there and consider those, that seems, that sounds like a bigger picture topic that I, I feel woefully inadequately prepared to wrestle with tonight, right?
And I think, just to make a comment, I, the, that's really the crux of the should-sshall. And the, the jam golf decision, I think, got into that as well, which is where municipalities really have, have to have tight definitions. Because to me, it's, we should lay out, what are the criteria that we're trying to protect? And, like, what are those criteria? And it may be that some, in some cases, might be more important than others if you had to prioritize in order to enable a project to go through, if it makes sense for the space. And that a body like the DRB would be able to weigh those criteria and then make their, make their calls based on that. The, the problem is that if you leave everything with shoulds, then you could legally get around that by saying, well, it says should, it doesn't say shall, so therefore, there's, there's a window, we're going to do it, and then the DRB can get stuck. And that, that to me is the problem. I, I think you, you have to create a framework that works the majority of the time, but that's going to let things fall through the cracks and it just, it becomes something that's incredibly frustrating to me.
Well, what if there were, the priority was based on what's the most important objective in a given part of the town? So that might suggest that, um, that in certain parts of the rural area where there are, you know, we, we know there are robust riparian corridors that convey a lot of animals, that that's maybe the most important thing. In other places, maybe there are some core forest blocks, um, that's the most important resource there. In other places, maybe it's some spectacular scenic views. It just, it, it seems like you could create some maps that would show, maybe there's some places where these, these things overlap in significance, but then maybe there's some places where it's kind of clear what the most important thing is. So it's not left up to chance.
Yeah, I, I definitely think that that is a, a way to solve that problem, but to get there, uh, that requires a, a volume of, um, research and inputs that, I'm just not sure where that would come from, short of hiring a consultant.
Well, I was just thinking, we could, Dean's thought on, maybe we could ask Jens to take a look at the town. And, um, and we, I think we have, um, you know, maybe somebody on the, I, I, I think this gets to the larger issue of, you know, should we have things like design guidelines that, you know, sort of direct some of this growth? So, the problem is we're leaving the DRB, they're faced with an awful lot of decision-making based on not a lot of fa, you know, solid factual information. I can see how they would be in a very difficult position. And, and trying to figure out what's the most important thing. We say we, all these things are, are important, but are they all important at the same time? Are they all equally important in the same place? You know, there's, we're lacking that information. But these days, I mean, you can make some maps pretty quickly, just even using the atlas or, um, um, and, you know, someone like Jens could probably throw something together that would be a starting point for, you know, the natural resources people, maybe in-
They've already, I'm looking for, um, the files from a CD. Jens's office released a ton of maps.
Okay.
Um, and I was hoping to be able to show them, and maybe they would inspire some of you. Or he maybe will say, if we ask him to look at those maps. Because the Natural Resources Committee saw them, was it April? Oh, you weren't at the, you were not at the April meeting, were you? Yeah, so-
That would be a great place to start, though, with Jens, just to get some, get some feedback. And I, I don't know that, we didn't get to that point in the conversation last time, but just what has been done in other places now that we've come a bit further and have more of a framework.
I think, um, you know, for somebody to map over, just like Becky Castle came in and said that her land was, um, open space, or her husband, um, came in, designated open space on our maps. I don't think we can say, draw out a map and say, these can't be developed if they're, you know, owned by people. But what we can do is give a definition. And, you know, that's, I guess, we've gone down the road to the shoulds and the shals, and then the, the mapping thing right now. But maybe we ought to just go back to what we were trying to do, just to simplify and do baby steps, give a definition of core forests that we all like. Because I think we all agree that there should be a definition of core forests. And then we can add riparian corridors and, you know, those things to, to other things that we need to define. If they're, if those are mentioned in the, in the town plan. But it seems like, right now, we should at least try to define core forests, right? Isn't, isn't that what we're supposed to be doing?
Well, it is, but it's how is that going to be used? And so that, we, we still need to update the regulation language around how that definition is used.
It says should right now, right?
It does, but that, that's what I'm saying, there should be a, like, my personal opinion is that, that I think that the should should stand, but then there should be a shall condition on that. That in the event, in the event that you encroach on this area, because based on the should, technically you can, there should be a limit of what it is that we're still trying to protect, there's a minimum.
Yeah.
Which basically, the, the function of that would be to provide a bit more latitude to a DRB to enable, because there are certainly, there, there could certainly be conditions where it would make sense for somebody to develop, to your point, like, being up on a ridge in the, in the woods, like, that might make more sense than developing on another area of their land. Or the argument with, um, o, open fields versus core forests, and how those get prioritized based on the language that's in there, that every, every site might have its own unique constraints that would push development to one way or the other. But if we have shals everywhere, you, you shall not develop on-
Open space, core forest.
Then you just lock everything in and everybody has to-
Yeah, Wilson, when they built up on the hill as you go out of town in Wilson, you had southeast, you got all those houses on the ridge, and they were all supposed to be screened by trees. And then the houses are built, and then they, they cut the trees away. And there was a, I don't know, I can't really remember exactly where the arguments went, or if they went to court, or what the deal was, but there was a lot of screening because of all that glass that was reflecting back as people were driving down the highway. So you can make the rules with the best rules, or the best rules and-
Right, which is, at the, at the core, I would, this may sound too utopian, but I would love to see something where you have a, basically what the town plan is doing, you're defining what the, what the intent is behind all of these different things, and then be able to interpret unique situations based on the intent and guide from there. But our legal system doesn't really allow that to happen. So, we have to have a solution one way or the other. So we have to have a solution one way or the other.
In terms of the definitions we have in front of us, we have the one that we have come up with i, in the plan. The only thing that concerns me is the block size. The third one seems the most, you know, easy to generalize. In other words, it's forest that's 100 meters from anything, and then 100 yards into the forest edge.
I agree, yeah.
You know, so that really shows you, it doesn't limit it, it could be five acres, it could be two acres, it could be one acre. Just seems to me the, the best definition of what we mean by core forest. So again, for a development that wants to go into the edge of the forest, you know, you've got effectively 100 yards before you're encroaching in core forest. So you're building in that, I forget what the term we had there was on the map, the Shelburne map we had, there was core forest and there was edge forest or something, yeah. But I know the, there's a development on, is it like Bostwick Road, O'Brien, where there's, you know, is that, is that not Bostwick, what's, cuts between Spear and Dorset Street, Barstow, sorry, yeah, Barstow Road. You know, there's sort of the development, as you come all the way across Barstow Road and hit Dorset Street, there's a bunch of houses out in the middle of the field. As you head back up Barstow Road, back towards Spear, if you're heading that way, beyond the right, there's, part of that same development was like a different phase, and those houses got chunked out of pieces of forest.
Yeah.
You know, and dropped in there, and a lot of people liked, I think Kate would say, well, I like the look of that, you know, because I don't want the houses out in the middle of the field. But I remember Susan presented that to us here in some meeting, saying that was a bit of a disaster from a ecological standpoint, because, you know, what was a nice contiguous swath of forest now has all these houses in them, and that, that block got dismantled.
The other thing is, is kind of interesting, is, you know, if we really want to kind of find a way to keep a handle on sprawl, I mean, if you were to, you know, hiding the, hiding all those houses in the woods, kind of provides a false sense that there's not sprawl there, where in fact, there is very destructive sprawl going on, you know, so, I mean, it, it, it's sort of...
It beautifies it.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, is it, is it, do we make a virtue out of this thing? That is really not a good thing. You know, we're trying to, I don't know, I don't know how that, if that would ever influence somebody not to develop in that area, but...
So if we're, so it sounds like the, the whole should and shall, and how to mitigate the effect of development is like a discussion for a later Planning Commission meeting, and that if we can just, like, check off one thing on the list, we could say, okay, we defined core forest, got something done, and then, because that, as long as we define it, then it leads to the next step of, then what do we do about it, in my opinion? Because we're, we're not gonna handle it all tonight.
Well, I do lean towards the third one as well.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think maybe we can start with, start there, and perhaps consult with the experts and see what kind of help we can get as well. I don't know that we're in an emergency situation where we have to do...
I guess the question is, if we like that definition, do we need to somehow...
Merge it with the first one?
Merge it with that one, or...
Yeah, I mean, the, the conservation plan, there was a lot of work put into that, and I feel like we, we have a definition, and if there aren't any major objections to it, then we need to have that at least as a core part of our definition. If there's a way of adding the third one to it.
I have a question, just what is the status of the open space plan? Is that a Planning Commission document that this body, or is that a Select Board document?
Natural Resources Committee put it together.
Can, can I make a suggestion?
Select Board, moving.
Yeah.
I was just, I'm just kind of, just Googled, like, kind of what other places do. And here's one from Massachusetts, where in addition to forest cores, they have core habitat, which might be a way to kind of check both boxes that we're trying to address, because in our situation, those two things are...
Like a riparian corridor would be core habitat.
Yeah, so you're kind of giving some standing to that, the presence of another related, very important resource that might allow the, if we're gonna keep things should, the DRB could have a discussion about, well, which is the more important in that situation? And maybe, you know, there, it could, you know, an expert's opinion, natural resources opinion could be sought, like, well, what do we do in this particular situation? What's the most important thing? So, I don't know, it's, I, I still feel like, you know, it's like more responsible sprawl is really the outcome, but, but, you know, unless the zoning changes and people's preferences change, it's kind of what we're stuck with. But here they talk about, core habitat identifies specific areas necessary to promote the long-term persistence of, in this case, of rare species.
Sorry, dear.
So, but, you know, maybe that would be just something we could, maybe there's like a Vermont thing that, yeah, we could ask Jens about, and he'd say, oh, yes, right here, I have exactly what you're looking for. I don't know. What do you think, Don? Does that make some sense? Just to kind of, we have this, we're, we're, this is a one-size-fits-all tool that has to apply to very specific areas, which are all very idiosyncratic in, you know, how they, you know, their, their resource value and their, how they manifest, and in their development potential, from the point of view of zoning and from the point of view of the particular developer's program. So, you know, how do we make this kind of one-size-fits-all tool that has, that the DRB has to use, apply a little bit, you know, more flexibly in these situations?
Having habitat as part of that decision process also makes some sense. You're getting the hill built, the house built up on top of the hill, the threat of so much, losing so much forest to clearcutting so we can have a nice view. That's the kind of thing that worries us, and even on the, the edge forest, too, there's still resource qualifications there, but it's...
I, I do like the idea of having, bringing Jens to talk about this, and I, Stephen, I agree with you as well, like, we, we need to start making some progress, because we've had this on the agenda for a while, and, and we haven't. But at the same time, I don't like just putting a tick in the box for the sake of putting a tick in the box. Like, the Select Board would like us to, to nail down these definitions, but at the end of the day, if we can have the definitions, but if they don't, I mean, if there are just ways of getting around them, and there's no meaning to them in the scheme of how the reg is used, then we end up shooting ourselves in the foot.
Don't we have to define the thing first before we can then write a, rewrite a regulation?
Yeah, that, that's why I'm suggesting that...
Here's my proposed definition, would be kind of blending these two in a way that say, core forest is a forested habitat that is part of a forest block of at least 320 feet, 100 meters from developed features such as building the roads, and more than 100 meters from the forest edge boundary. So it incorporates Sean's idea of, rather than, you know, defining this idea of forest blocks are what's important, and I think it gives you a little clearer sense of, when we talk about core forest, what does that mean? It's, it's forest that's 100 yards away from anything else, and, you know, it's gotta be at least, you know, a couple hundred yards wide, so that you can get 100 yards in from the edge to that piece that's the core.
So can you read that one more time?
Core forest, so I'm basically just, on the first one, I'm just keeping core forest is a forested habitat that is part of a, and then I put forest block, cut at least 75 acres in size, and, and so core forest is a forest habitat is part of a forest block at least 320 feet, 100 meters from developed features such as buildings and roads, and then comma, or just continue, and, and then grabbing from the bottom one, and more than 100 meters from the forest edge boundary. To a polling.
Yeah.
From there, to there.
Right.
I'm wondering if you might want to ask the mapping gurus to try to take that decision and apply it to like, the open space map we had, and see what that definition does to that map, how it impacts what, what we have on there, before you nail down the definition.
Could we also add to the, to the definition that the goal is strategic biodiversity conservation? That this, that's the purpose of, in the definition? Would that be helpful?
Say that again?
That, that the, the purpose of the, to put a purpose statement in the, it, statement in there, like, just to say that, the, you know, the goal of, because that was part of the, the Jam Golf decision, was that things were too vague. So maybe some sort of statement, I don't know if it's in the definition, or if it's in, somewhere in the regulation, but that it's, the purpose is to guide strategic biodiversity conservation.
Perhaps to maintain the sense of place?
Yeah, and, and may, and you could say, and maintain sense of place. I mean, it just provides some qualitative outcome information.
Probably not in the definition, but in the regulation.
Maybe in the regul, yeah, I mean, somewhere, just, just insert that, it would...
Yeah, in, in terms of having a definition to, to formalize, I, I like that combined, and then noting the, the goal or the purpose in the regs when we start working with that.
Yeah, and that kind of sets us up later for maybe, you know, going towards some kind of more design guidelines, or, you know, performance standards, or, you know, whatever, combination of all of those things.
Going a dozen addresses, some idea around a 75-foot-wide, you know, connect, connectors between blocks, or, you know, but I think that's not really part of the core forest, right? That's a different thing.
Yeah.
You might have to define that somewhere else, or talk about why we want to keep things like riparian corridors intact, or other forest connections.
Do we have, we don't have a definition for wildlife, do we have a definition for wildlife corridor right now, I don't think, or...
In the open space plan?
I'm not remembering any specific.
Yeah.
Reference, I don't, I don't really...
We would need to define wildlife then, too. You know, it could be caterpillars or something, you know, right? It's a, it, that was, that'd be a hard one to define, so we have to try to define that somehow, what wildlife is, just thinking in terms of this Jam Golf thing, ruling, where they questioned everything that wasn't nailed down positively.
This thing in Massachusetts, they, they refer to, and it's, this is, the phrase is capitalized, species of conservation concern, and, and, which is, suggests that there's a list somewhere of where those things are.
That would be helpful.
And maybe there's some Vermont list or something, yeah.
And maybe the related ecological support systems for those species of concern.
Yeah, and maybe, and maybe you can even narrow down even further, in Shelburne, or something like that, so that you don't have somebody saying, oh, well, hey, you're screwing up moose habitat, because we don't have that here, you know, so it's specific to Shelburne? Like, that's what, what Jens was saying, you know, you know, I mean, his, his big message to us was, it's all about the bobcats, you have incredible bobcat habitat here, which, you know, other things come with that, apparently, that are significant.
Well, I think Zolchak took away a lot of that habitat, and then amended up dead,
So, I guess, Stephen, a bit to your point, if we, if we can get some consensus around definitions, and then perhaps if we can package up the revised definitions that we have, and then on a future agenda, have those within context of the regulations, and start working on piecing that together.
Go back to that other one, Dean? It was back home, or it was hyperland, would that take you to a definition?
Adjust the definition if we need to?
Right.
Like, without issuing a definition change first?
Right, like, we have the definition, and now let's look at it in the context of the regs, and then we can start bringing it all together, yeah.
Core habitat, there you go, Kate.
I'd be in favor of that.
Pretty good definition.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we can have that in our heads at the same time.
And then, then do we need to define core habitat? Which is where you're going?
Not yet. We have should, shalls, and steep slopes, and open space, and real mechanisms to define.
And that's from the mapping Vermont's natural heritage.
Issue is happy. Certainly, good one, I think. This is a publication, this is the document that was updated and released that the maps were combined with, that received about a month ago, that the Natural Resources Committee saw the first time at their la, not the meeting yesterday, but the one a month ago. I would be happy to send the link out if people want to look at this. Yeah, please do.
I think I ended up with a hard copy of that, if it's not outdated.
Yeah, the, the first version of it, they did distribute fairly broadly.
Yeah.
Probably cost them an arm and a leg, but... So in terms of next steps, or from here...
That's, well, I mean, it sounds like we have a definition for core forest, a working definition.
And you've got that, haven't you? And I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, I would, you know, I would want to understand what the ramifications are, which is to say that...
It, it feels like it's a change from, I mean, it is a change from what's in, from what's in that open space plan, and in some ways, it feels like we're being more liberal, and in other places, we're, in other ways, we're being more conservative, right? We're, we're increasing the setbacks, but then we're reducing the size, and both those things may be fine, but does that half the amount of, you know, what's, what's in that map, or does it double it? And I don't have a, I don't have a sense for that, and I, I would want to understand sort of what the...
I guess Don was talking about, let them toy with it and see how it works.
Yeah, what, what the ramifications, so it's like, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm fine to go move forward and put it down, but before we, let's say, who's gonna vote on this? And I, I feel like we need to know what the ramifications are.
Yeah, this, we're, we're not in any position to be voting on anything, this is more just having, like, defining a working definition, so that we can repackage this material within the context of the regs, and then start seeing where we need to massage or bring things together.
It shouldn't be horribly difficult to illustrate how the open space planned map would compare to the application of this definition, we can, we can promise that.
Sounds perfect, sounds hard to do for me, but in the warmth and comfort of my business.
Well, I'd love to get Sean and Susan's take on that definition, for sure, because I trust their, you know, expertise more than mine, for sure.
And I think in that discussion, we'd also want to add, I mean, we'd want to add some definitions, like wildlife, wildlife corridor, potentially core habitat. I'm assuming we have riparian corridors defined, but if we don't, we probably need that as
Andrew, in the working definition you proposed, what was the first part? There was 100 meters in, and then 100 meters from human stuff, and how is that part defined?
Yeah, so it would be like 100 meters away from anything, and then it's the piece of the forest that's 100 yards in from the forest edge.
And how is the anything being defined?
Here, it was developed features such as buildings and roads. On the other one, they talked about buildings, structures, road, or driveway.
Because sometimes you'll have roads going through forests.
Right, but then it can't be core forest if it's...
But it would still be a forest definition.
Sure, but I mean, it's just defining, what do you mean by the core, right? So, I mean, it just, it made logical sense to me, right? It could still be a forest, but if it's, well, the road cuts through it now, you've got at least 100 yards of forest edge from the road in, and then you could have core forest behind that. But yeah, the road might have cut up something that had previously been core forest, but it's just that idea of, I mean, if, some of the maps we had on ours, right, had dark green in the middle and light green on the edge.
and light green on the edge, and that would effectively, that's what that definition covers is that hundred meters.
Yeah, from buildings arose and from the forest edge boundary.
Right.
Yeah, so the edge of a field, say.
Yeah, I mean, as you walked into the woods, the first hundred yards would not be considered core forest, right? That would be sort of forested edge where you've made that transition. You got in a little bit further.
Or walk from the road.
Which is different from core forest and edge forest in the open space plan.
What happens if somebody clearcuts that first hundred feet?
If somebody what?
Clearcuts that first hundred feet.
Well, this, this, the middle definition addresses that. Any human, away from human created, non-forested opening. Doesn't it?
What is edge forest defined as there?
Edge forest was between the core, the defined core forest and any buildings.
Seventy-five acres in size.
Hundred meters at a time.
It's the forested habitat, but it's part of a forested block, at least seventy-five acres in size and within that hundred meters of developed features such as buildings and roads. So it's, it fills in.
Right. So they match. Right?
So the thing.
Am I getting that?
The difference between this map and the, the map that would be based on the definition is that some of the white areas are going to be filled in. Because what was dropped out of this map are those forested areas of less than about seventy-five acres. So there are going to be a lot of little dots.
Right. Well, that's where I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking seventy-five acres is.
And maybe after you see it, you'll just say.
Yeah.
Twenty or something.
Right.
See, another point, looking at those two chunks on the southern border. If you're just looking at that acreage, that's a one thing, but if you look down into Charlotte, there's more contiguous forest, it's.
Continous, yeah, no, the piece I'm always fascinated by is this one right here. And it's right in the middle of every wildlife quarter, it's really close to center of town. You know, and that's a pretty big chunk, but you know, this, these little, that would be that edge forest, right? But that's a hundred yards wide, basically, that. Spray. Right, all those light greens become dark green once you're a hundred yards away from whatever's on the other side of the white green.
Well, can we, can we start with the definitions that we have around core forest and note some of those additional definitions that we might be able to pull in that we could look at against the regs?
The only edit to what I propose might be, do you keep a block of at least X acres in size, right? And X to be defined?
Right.
You know, so that it essentially becomes what's in our open space conservation plan, but adds this, you know, forest edge piece, although I guess that's kind of what they're saying here. The developed features.
Yeah, I just think the discussion around the regs could end up getting colorful. Not that it's a bad thing, and it's, but it's good to have a framework definition.
Anytime you have to put a number down, it's like, where's that number come from, right? How do you justify that? I'd be interested to know why seventy-five was picked here.
Yeah, that would be between fifteen and a hundred.
Fact.
Right, I mean, there has to be some logic or reason behind it, I just, I don't know, I'd be curious. I mean, because I'll keep it if there's some good, you know, ecological science that says that's a chunk that is necessary to support a certain amount of diversity and have a predator and whatever, I mean, great, awesome.
It does feel like there needs to be some sort of lower limit on it, just by saying, we're going to have a hundred feet and under, a hundred meters and a hundred meters, and you could wind up with a strip of, you know, five feet that's a hundred meters long. You'd be like, well, what's the point of that? I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
Right.
There needs to be some lower into it.
Is it seventy-five acres? Is it five acres? I don't, I don't know.
To Dick's point about the, you know, what happens if somebody.
Clearcuts the first hundred meters in, then that becomes the forest edge. They could go back and do the next hundred meters, and then the next hundred meters, then the next hundred meters, because it's, somebody would be redefining the forest edge. So how, how do we protect against that kind of thing in the definition?
At some point, you may do it by referring to a map, if you have a map that you have confidence in, you would basically say, it's these areas that are subject to the map. And, but you're right, you know, and the map is, is going to get out of date. I was thinking about some of these, you know, comparing, recreating this map would be different today because there are going to be some buildings and locations that weren't there before.
Right, yeah.
But just as a general principle, the way that you get around that problem is you define the areas according to a specific map and you try to hold the line on the map. But of course, if it has changed, you still have the applicant arguing that, well, it was like that, but it's not like that anymore.
Jonathan, is there any, I don't, I can't pick out high acres as location on that, but is there any?
Core forest that's indicated there anywhere close to where you would be?
Certainly nothing with seventy-five acres.
Right.
I was trying to picture in my mind how, how far a hundred meters is and having a hard time relating that.
Right.
Yeah, so I think even that, it's, it's also like, in which dimension are you measuring? You know, you might have like a long skinny piece, so you figure that out.
I mean, it doesn't look like, I've been, just from thinking where I think your places. It looks like it's all that fields.
There's a lot of fields, but there's some forest blocks too. And then, you know, we border Beach Cove, which shares our forest block.
Right.
Mine goes in the middle.
So noting that we aren't going to solve this tonight and the time, I think this has been good discussion around core forest definition that we can use as a draft next time, next to the regs. In considering the other definitions, skipping Steve Sloves for a second, we had previously talked about should, shall, I think we're familiar with the differences between the words and that gets into the regulatory updates and how we're using it. Legal mechanism, we've talked about before, and I think that we're adjusting our open space definition to make that less of an issue, I think, based on last time. So basically, open space, which we talked about at length last time, I don't know if we want to touch on that and/or steep slope, but it's looking like the form-based zoning in the Yarmouth lessons and all of that is going to get punted again.
Can, can we touch on the legal mechanism? Because I think there's a nuance here that I didn't see before. The, the part that reads "legal mechanism," "legal device or instrument that formally expresses a legally enforceable act, process, or duty obligation or right, and therefore evidences that that act, process, or agreement includes conditions of approval contained within findings of fact, conclusions of law issued by the DRB." So this goes into relating to what you were talking about, Jonathan, at previous meetings, where the, the legal mechanism to preserve open space was, it didn't list something that was a finding of fact by the DRB as one of the evidences of, of open space or whatever being, you know, deemed as, as open space. That we were, you know, the, the things that we were talking about is like, you know, letting the land trust take it, take over the development rights or, or deeding it to the town or those kind of things, which are pretty severe. But if somebody goes in with an application for a PUD and needs to designate the open space, this definition, if this is the one that we use, it also mentions a legal mechanism of some sort, and this would be a legal mechanism, right?
Well, the issue has been framed for you in a way that suggests that it, that the current regs means something that they don't mean. That people are always reading the regs to look for exceptions, but it's interesting that in this case, people are looking in the regs to say that they, they demand more than they actually do. This isn't in the regs currently, this is written in the attempt to make it much more explicit that legal mechanisms includes a condition of approval, which has been the interpretation for a while. It's been the professional interpretation, the, the administrative interpretation of those regs. It's certain people that have looked at the regs and say, they require us to give the land to someone else, but that's not what it means, that's not how it's been interpreted. But if you incorporated a definition like this, it maybe will make it even clearer to those who are concerned about it that it doesn't demand turning over land.
That makes sense to me. Where does this come from? And what, is it related to our regulations at all?
It was basically done internally, thinking through what words would take people's fears away.
Dean wrote it.
In other words, i.e., yeah.
Well, it was, it was intended to, yeah, to make it clearer than it is right now, evidently.
Suggested improvement.
Yeah, because we established last time, the trigger language in open space was that land would be set aside from development by conveyance to the town. Like, that phrase right there was what.
Wasn't why it was just, it was a string of things that you could do, but it wasn't very clear.
Yeah, and it said, or some other legal mechanism. So here, you're suggesting a definition of a legal mechanism that also includes that when you apply for your DRB or your PUD, get it reviewed by the DRB and say, okay, we're setting aside this amount.
Right, agriculture, or this amount for forest.
Or for open space. Yeah, the sixty percent. But, yeah, but you, you don't have to go through the land trust or some other outside group.
It's never been the case.
Yeah, that's never been the case.
It's never been the case.
It was how the definition was interpreted by people who read the definition and freaked out, which granted, the way it was worded, I understand the trigger.
That's what people out there in past meetings were saying had to happen, and we were saying no, and they were saying yes, and we were saying no.
So now we're basically just trying to clarify.
But we didn't say what else they could do.
We, well, we did to actually talk about it, we talked about, I mean, because there was, by some legal mechanism such as covenant, covenants or easements, the, the discussion pulled out that another legal mechanism could have been just when you, when you define your site plan to the DRB and they say, okay, we agree to that, that, that's fine. It's not saying that you have to give your land to some other organization to steward or anything like that. That, that's built in here, but it was made clear that we wanted to add some clarity because there was definitely confusion around it, and we didn't want people to have that impression.
Right, so isn't it a good idea to have legal mechanism in this kind of definition, which sounds pretty good? Incorporated into our definitions?
That's why it's here.
Yeah, but, but we weren't talking about it.
Oh, you know, and that's my bad. I, when, when I was reading over it, I thought that we had discussed legal mechanism last time and that, yeah, defining legal mechanism was helping. Taking this a step further into open space, we had also agreed that the language on the South Burlington definition was a little more friendly, and I don't think that we incorporated anything one way or the other. I don't think we defined open space with that merging because, in my opinion, South Burlington's definition as it stands is not what we're going for, because it doesn't talk about protection, it just says, this is what open space means. It doesn't mean that it needs to be protected in some way.
Which would take away the need for a legal mechanism, you mean?
No, what I'm saying is that if we just went with the South Burlington definition as it reads here, we're not serving the purpose that we initially intended, which was to say that, we've said that we want sixty percent of a plot to remain open space, and there needs to be some way to encourage that that sixty percent will remain open space. That's outside of the, the South Burlington definition. So there would still need to be something that says it's set aside from development. I think the trigger language was by conveyance to the town, especially with that being the first one. But by some legal mechanism, and I, we could just change this definition to say it's set aside from development through some legal mechanism, for example, conveyance to the town or qualified holder or the, well, I, I don't know if we want to add what's already in the legal mechanism definition.
You mean the proposed legal mechanism definition? Because this is not, we don't have a legal mechanism definition.
Correct, yeah, correct, the legal definition, yeah, the definition that is on the page now, currently. I mean, I, I would say that the legal mechanism definition might benefit from adding on conveyance, I don't know if that's the right word, but set, set aside from development through, like, an example of this legal mechanism could be setting aside land for using the land trust or conveyance to the town or, like, use examples there?
Why don't you think it's clear when it just says land maintained and essentially an undisturbed natural state for the purposes of, I mean, it's, do we have to explicitly say it's free from development if we're saying it's maintained, undisturbed, natural state? And, I mean, maybe it's too vague, but it seems implied to me there that.
If I could make one comment, I think one of the other things we were appreciating about the South Burlington one was that it had this notion of, like, the possibility of improving the land or managing the land or working with the land. It wasn't just about like, you know, don't touch, don't go there. There's this notion that it could be used for civic use or for improved in some way. So it was just like a softer, more generative language.
I, I get that it's softer, I disagree that it, it's more flexible, because, I mean, our, it does say, like, our original definition said agricultural use or for active or passive outdoor recreation uses. I mean, that covers the things that people were saying, oh, my gosh, we're not going to be able to do anything.
But what, does it mean working lands and local food production covers that?
Oh, it does, I, I don't have any.
But isn't that agriculture, agricultural use?
Yes. I, I, to me, this, you know, I have to say, I agree with Jonathan. I think this, this is, just adds more flexibility about use. I mean, what we're essentially saying is, we don't want any houses on it, which is kind of really what we all care about, I think.
Agreed.
You know, no, no house, no subdivisions, you can't ever have subdivisions or a house on there.
Added legal mechanism here, right? Land maintained by some legal mechanism, essentially an undisturbed, I mean, is that, that's your.
Yeah.
That's missing.
Yeah, okay. Back to what you were saying, Andrew, about land, which in connection with the development proposal, is that what you were talking? Is set aside from.
You can't resign, because we will never be able to think clearly without you.
Is that, is that the part that you were asking? You had said something about development.
Oh. Well, I mean, I think he was, it was more that Jason was saying, you know, it's not clear in this that it's free from development, but I thought it was when you say undisturbed natural state.
It's, it's more the addition of the protected by some legal mechanism, because there's a difference between somebody saying, okay, I'm, I'm coming to you with this project and I'm saying that this is the sixty percent that I'm setting aside.
Right, I hear, I agree with you, and I think having that referenced somewhere in the beginning of the South Burlington one kind of captures everything we need, right?
Land identified and set aside through a legal mechanism, which is maintained and essentially an undisturbed. Like, basically adding something in that first bit just to indicate that there's something, there's some formal process that's, that's actually identifying that sixty percent.
Right.
Not to say it couldn't ever change, but that's, when a project comes in and they say this, it needs, there needs to be, this is what it is.
Or you could say land maintained under a defined legal mechanism, you know, so, because you ought to reference that other definition, basically.
Yeah, exactly.
So, so in Westford, when they do, you know, big subdivisions, they will have a parcel that has its own ID, that is the open space parcel, and it has an open space agreement that goes with that. And, you know, and that gets, that's kind of, you know, like bespoke for whatever that, you know, particular application is, but it normally entails certain things. And it's routinely used, you, you know, routinely, people will, you know, use it for sugaring or maybe somebody will build a horse barn there, and, you know, it's just, it's just not ever going to be used for some residential development. But something associated with that, that's totally fine.
So just to be clear, that resonates with me, the second to South Burlington definition, which I, you know, last meeting I expressed interest in, support. which, you know, last meeting I expressed interest and support for. I appreciate the addition of the legal mechanism into that, just as Andrew described.
So maybe some wording is open space and land, and then insert set aside by some legal mechanism, and then go on maintain and essentially an undisturbed natural state, semicolon, or that is enhance or manage for public use, working lands or local production?
Yeah, I think actually, yeah, it doesn't have to be as wordy as what I said. It can be just land, comma, set aside through legal mechanism, comma, and essentially maintained and essentially an undisturbed state. So you're, yeah, it's just adding set aside through some legal mechanism. And then we've got a definition for legal mechanism.
Should it include something about the development being part of the development proposal? That's how we got there.
Oh, yeah. How would it not be part of a development proposal? I mean, the development proposal means you're going to do something with that land, right?
Well, that's how you're getting to the open space part of it.
Well, and I guess, and this gets into the tedium. So if we're, if the regulation says that a rural PUD needs to identify 60% to remain open space, then that would forward somebody to, "Okay, what is open space?" And then you look at open space. So you wouldn't have to necessarily say it's in connection with the development proposal at that point, because the reg would be defining that that's what's part of the rural PUD process. Is that accurate?
I think so.
It seems that way to me.
How does that sound?
Well, I think people, people think about open space in a couple of different ways. One is a more generic way, and one is peculiar to PUDs. And this is a definition that's written with the latter in mind, not the former. So, I mean, you just have to, I think, accept now, if it's too close to open space more generically, then maybe you come up with a different phrase and you define that. But we've used open space in the regs in Shelburne for a long time, so that's the phrase that's been defined.
Because the only place this is relevant is for PUDs. Is there, is there...
Well, this is the zoning regs, oh, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. The principal implementation of open space in the zoning regs, when we're talking about open spaces, is as part of a PUD.
Yeah.
Should we just call it open space in PUDs? And make it like really super clear?
Right, that's true.
Right. Good.
Open space as pertaining to PUDs.
PUD open space.
Yeah, or PUD open space, right?
It's called PUD open space.
Or you could call it open space and say, start off by saying, "In regards to PUDs, land set aside by some legal mechanism and maintain essentially blah, blah, blah."
As part of the PUD process or something.
Yeah, but is that really the only case that applies to open space, PUDs? Open space isn't referred to in anything else except for PUDs?
Well, this, the definition that's in the regs is a definition that's written for its use as part of PUDs.
So we don't have to refer to it in the definition as referring to a PUD?
That's fair, yeah. I mean, there would be a need of, I mean, yeah.
It wouldn't go there.
Right.
Well, just to play devil's advocate, you guys do have a whole open space plan, which you have up on the screen right there, which presumably is bigger than PUDs.
Although Don can explain how there's been a lot of discussion about changing what we call it, right? Because of the limitations that people associate with it.
Kills advocating the change to conservation land.
Right.
Okay, so that would be conservation land, and then that would be separate and different from open space definition.
Conservation land being those that are specifically set aside to another entity that would maintain it for the duration of time in its natural state.
So the purpose of the rural district is to maintain and enhance open spaces. So if you go back to, "Oh, what's an open space?" And we actually don't want to say this is an open space definition for a PUD, right? This is our open space definition.
So you'd almost want, this open space definition and the whole set aside via legal mechanism could be, like, a sentence added onto it as, like, pertaining to rural PUDs, open space is set aside via legal mechanism. So then you retain your definition of open space, but you add the caveat for rural PUDs.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I like that.
Okay.
This is like, become like the Supreme Court or something.
I think that committee's always super efficient and fun. We always get there, but sometimes I'm like, "God, should have really smart people up here."
How can this be so complicated?
So hard. This is the hard work.
Okay. So we have an open space definition. Are we all good with that legal mechanism definition as it stands? I like that.
The next one, I was trying to parse that as you were reciting it, the legal mechanism definition. So do I understand correctly, there was like this idea of having a condition of approval at the time you make your application, and that itself would constitute the legal mechanism? Is that correct?
It sounds like it, yeah.
Spent the party line for a long time.
Got it. And so what about the future flexibility? Like, if you wanted to change that in 15 years, what would be the mechanism for doing that?
Well, I think we cover that with this definition, that it can be enhanced and managed, you know, and it's sort of defined in open space, so.
Oh, yeah, got it. I was actually...
But that would also, Jonathan, you could write that into your particular PUD approval, what you want. A PUD is really kind of like, almost like a little mini zoning set of rules for your particular property. So you could, you know, presumably bake that in at the time.
Got it.
Bake that in, that 60% can move from here to here, to here?
Could be growing oranges in 15 years.
That you would say are necessary for the site and get their concurrence and have it written into the decision, so that when 15 years goes by, you point to the language in the decision that says that this kind of anticipated change is actually necessary, and you're doing it for that approval. That's like Kate's saying, it's like a mini set of zoning just for that property. That's the ideal, is to have it explicitly addressed in the decision.
Yeah.
Because that way, there's no ambiguity. The short answer to Jonathan's question is that if people ignore it, is it depends, it's going to depend on what has happened between the time of approval and the day that the request is made.
And then the process after that, there would be an opportunity to change it, but it would be onerous and costly, because you'd have to amend the PUD, you know, which would require reopening the whole thing, basically. So that's why it's, you know, kind of baking it in at the beginning is, to the degree that that's possible, is ideal. But...
So you could write something to the effect of, you know, 60% of the property will be set aside in perpetuity, the specific 60% may evolve over time as the land is improved and maintained. In other words, like, we're going to actually do something here, but we're going to let something go, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Got it. So your point is that by writing the fact that evolution will occur into this proposal, and then that proposal being approved means that evolution is baked into the legal mechanism?
Into your particular agreement.
Into that particular...
Not necessarily for somebody else, who might not care about that, you know?
Got it.
But you can, yes, you could certainly do that. Like, on, you could maybe say something like, "On balance, there will always be 60% that is open." You know, the location of that may be modified over time, depending on X, Y, and Z, whatever it is.
Got it.
Yeah.
Well, and I think a lot of things you want to do might be included in this idea of enhanced and managed for civic use, right? So that it wouldn't even matter, you know, like, it's still open space, but you happen to have added something that benefits. So it's okay. And that's what I'd read it.
Or in your instance, it means it's never going to have a house on it.
Right.
You know, something like, you know, like, there are certain things you might not have be able to say with certain certitude exactly what it will be, but you can say for certain that it will not be the following things.
Right.
Which might, the DRB might say, "That's good enough for us."
Right.
I think, I mean, you have the flexibility to do that.
Because you know where you want your house sites to be, right?
Yeah, I mean...
How can Stephen design this great thing?
No, we're not at that point yet. I mean, we have, we have the right to build two more house sites at some point in the future, and we have no plans to do that.
Right.
But we don't know where those would be.
Right. Got it.
So, anyway, but that makes sense.
Good.
Could I just say, as a, about to... To Kate's statement that perhaps in 15 years you can relook, reapply, you know, this is where we fear the, all right, the reapplication's going to be a subdivision here now, which is going to allow another house, and the creeping sprawl of intruding into the rural district of more and more buildings. So we need some kind of protection in that legal...
Well, the underlying density of the land wouldn't be changing. So, you know, something like that, there would be, usually the PUD amendment is for something really pretty small, frankly, like, maybe they forgot to, you know, whatever, like, let's say that the wetland that was mapped on the property has kind of, you know, changed locations, you know? These things are only, the permit's only good for a certain number of years for that reason. And now it's more convenient to, or they've gone from being class three to class two or something like that. And so now, you know, there's a desire to have maybe a driveway go a different route or something like that, but you're not allowed to do that because site plan says it's going to be a certain way. So you'd have to amend the thing to do, to get permission to do that.
Yeah, we've sat through...
Yeah. Yeah. So...
And if it was a full-on subdivision, it would still, that would be its whole other PUD process?
Yeah.
Where you'd have to account for the open space in however it's being subdivided?
Still, the 60%, the original 60% mask would be protected somehow?
That's my interpretation. Yeah. I mean, the, we should definitely test that as we get further along.
Well, I mean, we know, I mean, well, yeah, I guess it's hard to generalize, but I'm just thinking in the Hayekers' case, there's already a sense of, there's five house sites or whatever. Yeah, I mean, that's it, right? So you could amend things, but you're not going to be amending it to add five more. Because, you know, and actually test something you said earlier about Bob Beck in the open space. You know, there's a legal holding on their land that says it can't change or it can't be developed.
Yeah.
So therefore, it's looked at on a map as space that's not going to change, right?
Oh, yeah, good point.
So, I mean, like, the fact that that map was seen as, like, prescribing what they could do with their land was a little bit illogical to me, because, I mean, it's just, it's a parcel that, as of right now, anyway, can't change. And it's just noting that, that, you know, other places may change. This other big, I don't know how many acres they have, same-sized thing, could change into five houses over time, but that one can't. So it's seen as unchangeable.
So the map was correct then in that case?
That's the way I interpret it, but I didn't really want to get into shouting match here, so.
All right. So given where we are with time, steep slopes may need to be continued to future date, which, and we won't get into form-based zoning.
Again.
Again, right. It's starting to become a running joke almost. Although we should all be really familiar with the Yarmouth Study, because this is the third time it's been in our packet. That's good. So I would say that, because the next topic was future agenda topics, and I think based on this, we'd be looking at it next time we have our accessory apartment hearing. This is May 23rd. It would be great just to be able to close out some of these definitions if we could have some time to talk about the steep slope definitions. And then the definitions that we've just drafted have a review of those alongside the regulations that they apply to, so that we can start thinking about any regulation amendment. And then, this all gets into time permitting, but the form-based zoning discussion, and then waivers in the cleanup amendment, which we clearly won't get to all of those next time, but I think as a general priority, we can...
A board.
Yeah, right. We can see how that shapes up.
So the 23rd, we're having the accessory apartment hearing here.
Mm-hmm.
Then that would then go to the select board next.
Got it. And is that agreeable, or any other things to inject in there, or?
I like that plan.
Okay. Then...
I'm a little adjourned.
Hang on, yeah, was there any other business first?
Some quick announcements, okay? Sure. Is that I emailed out the material having to do with the solar proposal at Shelburne Museum. Just to put that in a little context, the town has this ordinance, the ordinance...
When did you send that?
When?
Yeah.
Couple days ago.
Did that go to everybody on the commission?
I don't remember seeing that one specifically.
I know I read it, but I'm wondering about the distribution.
Gosh, okay, well, I will send that again. I thought I had sent to everyone a copy of the scanned document, which is the announcement, basically, that there's a solar proposal that will be on the museum lands west of the tracks. I think it's a 500.
Kilowatt, yeah.
Yeah. And the way the rules work, there's a 45-day notice period, and then another 30-day, and you can comment during that, and then there's a 30-day period. Anyway, under the town's ordinance, the select board drives the bus on the comments, but the draft agenda for the select board meeting that I have seen for the select board's meeting on the 14th has a 10-minute spot on it for presentation on that proposal. So it's possible that the ball will start rolling at the next select board meeting.
Right?
I'm sorry.
I also wanted to mention that the public works staff is working on an update to the public works specifications. The town plan does talk in several places about the need for changes to the public works specs. I've shared that information that's in the plan with public work staff, and I'll be talking more about it. But I just wanted people to know. I think it's something that the commission has expressed in...
Someone's driving that fuss.
Well, Chris Robinson has wanted to see some changes having to do with stormwater and wastewater facilities for a while, and he has started to do that a couple of times. The latest twist has been, rather than trying to change the current Shelburne specs, Chris saw the Essex specifications and liked them. And so now the idea is that instead of reworking the Shelburne specifications, starting with the Essex specifications, which have a lot more oomph to them. So that's the latest. As far as who's pushing this the most, I would say Chris, because he's been the most focused on it.
Are there going to be, is there, this, like, road thoroughfare standards, things like that, or?
Well, I've, it's a big document, and I haven't spent a lot of time with it. Robbie has spent some time with it. I can, I don't know if those things are in it, but I can tell you that I have made a point of highlighting those parts of the plan that talk about the need for greater bike ped accommodation. And I've said to Paul that, you know, these, this is language in the plan. So you can expect that if people...
Paul's not in charge of this, is he?
Well, no, no, but it's a, it's a document that gets, a lot of the work is done by department heads who are responsible for their sections. So I'm just pointing out to him that there's language in the plan that talks about the need for updating, and he's been, you know, he's been told that there are people, like the planning commission, who are interested in this topic. And we can talk about it more, but I wanted people to understand that that's, it's a process that's now underway.
Oh, so basically, he is ultimately working on that aspect of the public work standards. So...
Well, I think...
Is he planning to reach out to, you know, the bike and ped committee? Is he, I mean, what is his, you know, how's this going to work?
I don't know that Paul had, Paul wasn't the person who was saying the public work specs need to be changed, but since the public work specs are being changed, he would have an opportunity to propose changes. As soon as I realized that, I wanted him to understand that there are going to be changes or additions that people will want, and he should know that people will want those things, because the plan calls for them. So he was, I think, a little bit surprised, but he knows that. I don't know how much Paul himself will feel the need to propose changes to the Essex document, but I'll circulate that material.
So is the idea that this is going to be a... So is the idea that this is going to be a, starting, we're going to just look at what Essex has done and sort of try and co-opt as much of that information as seems to make sense for us? Is that the idea?
Well, I, what I've understood is that Chris is thinking of taking the Essex document and editing that. Louis for Water, I believe, is doing the same thing. So that the starting point would not be Shelburne specs, it would be the Essex specs.
But broadly, like, for all aspects of public work?
Well, there are some things that are in the Essex specs that aren't in, there isn't a stormwater section in our current specs.
Right.
That's, that's big and has all of the things in it that Essex does. So I think the intention would be to pull that in.
Right, right. No, I understand, I understand that. I'm, I'm actually, I'm really, all I really, really care about are the road standards.
Right.
That's my huge concern.
And that's the reason I'm mentioning it today. And so that people can start to be aware of it and they can start letting others know that they're aware of it and they are interested in it.
Okay. So, so the idea is to look through the prism of the Essex standards for road standards, including all of these things, but also road standards and see about maybe swapping out ours for theirs or something like that?
I think the basic idea is, should we cast off ours and go to Essex or a version of Essex that's modified? And it would be the latter. I think we wouldn't take Essex lock, sock, and bear.
Right, no, I understand. Okay, okay. So, but that's what we should be, we should, those of us who care about these things should look at what Essex does and see if we...
Okay, see what we think.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
Uh, there was another thing. I've already mentioned that. I think I'm good.
It's a big, potentially big, huge thing.
Well, is that then motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Good for Andrew, second by Neil. All right, I'll appear.